Call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Ellsworth City Council. This is Monday, March 16, 2015. Time is 7:00 PM. Agenda item number two, Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand with us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three, Rules of Order. The council meetings are conducted under Robert's Rules of Order and by additional rules that were adopted at the organizational meeting in November of 2014. Item number four, Adoption of Ellsworth City Council Minutes of the February 9, 2015, Regular Meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Moving seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Abstention.
And one abstain. Six, zero, and one abstain. For the record, all councillors are present tonight and accounted for. Number five, City Manager's Report. Manager Beal.
The only thing I have to report tonight is Tammy and I have been diligently working on the budget. And so by Friday, we should have a draft budget that she may need to finish putting together, but we'll have that in a schedule for the budget workshops. So it's coming up pretty quickly.
Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Committee reports. Any reports on committees that have met since the last council meeting?
How about committee did not meet?
Okay. That's noted. Councillor Fordham?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Recreation Commission met the first Wednesday of the month. Further review of the budget. We had presentations by three or four of the requesting agencies through our budget. Had some very good presentations. Brought a lot of the newer Recreation Commission members up to speed because they had never seen a presentation that usually came to council. Did have a discussion on attendance and membership to be followed up next month. And we've lost the ice skating rink. Weather socked in on it. Surface deteriorated, got all soft and frozen. So it is done for the year.
Done for the season.
Unless something happens. And as soon as we can get to the building, we will clean it out so that everything in there will be safe for the summer.
Great.
End of report.
Thank you. Any other committees met care to report? All right, seeing none, we'll go right to number seven, Citizens' Comments. This is an opportunity for Ellsworth citizens to comment on any of the activities of the city or the council. And we welcome you to come to the podium, state your name for the record, and be brief. And we will hear your comments. Going once. Going twice.
Got one in the corner.
I am not a citizen of Ellsworth, but as Director of the Wyatt, I think you will see a couple of comments. Is that acceptable, sir?
Proceed.
On behalf of the Wyatt, I'd like to take a moment to thank Michelle Beal for the years of service to our community. Michelle, your commitment to the community collaborations, a vision for greatness, and the love of the Ellsworth community is a winning combination that is evident by the accomplishments of our city during the tenure. The impressive teammates you have, the City Council, the great staff at City Hall. It does not happen accidentally. Great job. Over the years, your leadership as City Manager has enabled many to work to a common cause. The common cause is the betterment of the lives of the citizens of Ellsworth. The General Bright E. Moore Community Center is a positive example and a legacy for you to be proud of, and we are all very thankful. Your dedication and commitment has raised the bar for all to follow. And you have left our great city in a fantastic position to continue the work you have started. I just want to say that it has been an honor, a pleasure, and a whole boatload of fun to work with you over these years, and I wish you the very best. We, I, will miss you. However, I look forward to working with Michelle Beal, the citizen, in future things. So good luck and thank you. Thank you for the time.
My name is Lili Pugh, and I am a citizen of this wonderful city of Ellsworth. And I took a few minutes upstairs to, after a meeting that I was at, to thank Michelle. The one thing I do want to put on record is that I've lived all over the world, I've worked in major cities, countries, on the far reaches of the earth. And I have never in my life have I worked with a city manager, city council, and a group of people that define can-do, will-do, and all of you together, under Michelle's leadership and all of your good, hard dedication, have transformed the city of Ellsworth. It's always been a city that I've been incredibly proud to represent. But where we are now and what we have the opportunity to achieve in the next three, five, 10 years is something that people would never have even thought about had it not been for what you started. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Lili. You certainly thank you for those comments. Item number eight, Presentation of Awards. First off, for Darryl Clark, for 15 years of service with the Ellsworth Fire Department. Darryl is on a training tonight, and so he's unable to be with us doing what he does best. And so we'll see that the chief and clerk get the certificate to Darryl. Then we're going to recognize the Ellsworth High School Wrestling Team for winning the Class B State Championship. And we still have a few people around, knowing Michelle, that her husband was on that team, and he was captain of the team. And we have a few other people, too. But what we're going to do tonight is just, I want to read the names of those on the coaching staff. And if you're seated, please stand. If you're standing, please raise your hand, okay, just so you can be recognized. Coach J.F. Burns. Travis Hardison. Ron Hardison. Aaron Will. Adam Atherton. Wayne Wright. Now for the members of the team, we're just going to call your name. As you hear your name called, just come up and get a certificate from Mrs. Beal, and I'll shake your hand, and you can go right back where you were, okay? Maybe you're going to want some photos. Okay, cater, it's going to be all ready. All right, so we're going to start with Robert Banner. These are in, according order. Peyton Cole? Will McNunn? Connor Petros? Jeff Weeks? And we'd like the captains of the wrestling team to come and receive this plaque, which says, "2015 Class B State Champions, Ellsworth Eagles Wrestling Team. Congratulations from the City of Ellsworth." Get ready, Dan. I'm ready.
They're not that bad for him, Matt. Thank you.
We also have another distinction tonight, and that is, we have some members of the Ellsworth High School Swimming and Diving Team. They competed at the Class B State Championship, and some of our swimmers came home with gold medals, including Sam Alvarado. And Hayden Sattler.
Very folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You've been wrestling the same team.
Thank you for coming. Thanks for winning.
Thursday. Bring the family. It's going to be a fun night.
Mr. Morris? He was my history teacher 34 years ago.
Thanks, Rick.
Oh, really? I think Connor is Paul and Kristen.
Yeah.
That Robidoux. Must be Phillip's grandson. Phillip's older than I am.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
The, and then the Robidoux. Just like the Wood. Want to look at it? It's funny. Yeah, it's really cool. Really cool. Says, "I think John..."
No. No.
It's 200.
This is the front step.
Moving along, we're going to the Consent Agenda. These are considered to be routine and acted by one motion unless any councillor wants to remove any item and deal with that item individually. So we have item number nine, Council Order 031501, Reservation of the City of Ellsworth Right to Harvest Airwise. Item 10, Council Order Number 031502, Request to the Tax Collector to Accept Payments on Tax-Aquired Timeshare Units per the Attached Spreadsheet, and to Authorize City Manager to Release Said Properties Through Municipal Claim Deeds. Item 11, Council Order Number 031503, Appointment of David Cole as Agent to the Overseers by the City Council. And item number 12, Council Order Number 031504, Approval of City Manager's Appointment of David Cole as Tree Warden. Does anyone want to remove any of those items and deal with them individually?
Just one question. I'm wondering if the acting city manager, David Cole, has the background to be the tree warden and oversee as a city council?
He's been thoroughly vetted on that.
Move the Consent Agenda is approved, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Moving seconded, that we accept the Consent Agenda. Anyone further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Item number 13, Under New Business, Public Hearing and Action on Issuance of Business License. We have one tonight. VDJ Group LLC Doing Business as Mainly Meet on Main. 193 Main Street for Renewal of a City Class B License. Victular Liquor Amusement and Renewal of a State Restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, and 4 Liquor License, Malts, Spirituous, and Vinus. Any issues with any of these as far as city departments go? No? All right, we'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anyone wish to comment on this license application? Seeing none? Close the public hearing? Counsel?
Mr. Chairman, move approval for the relicensing of Mainly Meet on Main.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Item 14, Council Order Number 031505, Request to Deed Two Parcels in Commerce Park Plus 11 Acres at the End of Commerce Park to the Ellsworth Business Development Corporation to Generate Seed Money to Assist in Development of the Ellsworth Area, Sponsored by Councillor I requested that this be placed on tonight's agenda, and council has been somewhat briefed on this, but I'm going to ask the Economic Development Director if she would come at this time and introduce those that are going to be presenting.
Thank you very much. First of all, before I introduce our chairperson, I wanted to just thank you all for taking this time because I know that it's, you know, we've been working for quite a some time for two different projects. And tonight you'll hear about all of that and our request for the two unsold parcels in the Commerce Park and the 11 acres. So it is with great pride and respect that I introduce you to Charles Hewitt. He is the Vice President and COO of Jackson Laboratory. And I thank you and all of the board because for the last year and a half, this is what has been occurring, and they have done all the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey. It probably is true that economic development isn't quite as much fun as winning the state wrestling championship. It's a very close, close second, especially when you get to work with Mickey, who's just doing a fantastic job for the city and certainly in her role helping the Economic Development Corporation Board. I have a number of colleagues here from the board tonight, including Karen Stanley, Bob Merrill, Chuck Osgood, Terry Smith, Lili Pugh, Renee Kelly, Mark Rosborough, Kevin Tessio, and Tony McKim. And I can tell you, this is a hands-on, shirt sleeves, rolled-up committee. We've accomplished an incredible amount in a year and a half, and I must say, I have been pleased and surprised. Unfortunately for you, I have a PhD in economic development, and I can't resist the opportunity to take just 30 seconds to share a couple of thoughts. I've had a chance to look at economic development around the world. I lived and worked in Ireland before the Celtic Tiger, Asia, east coast, west coast of the US. And there are some really simple principles that are so important. One is, you have to take a long-term view. This does not happen overnight. We have to work hard, but we have to be patient. Second thing is, has to be focused. You really have to pick your battles. You really have to pick your opportunities. You really have to be willing to say no to things that don't fit the strategy. And I remember sitting, I developed a large pharmaceutical manufacturing company in Ireland, sitting with the Irish Business Development Authority when our mechanical contractor said to them, "Well, when are you going to do something for us?" Us, the mechanical contractor. And the IDA said, "We've already done something for you. Nicomed Ireland, whose facility you're building, is what we've done for you." That was focus, and they focused for 50 years to get what they got. We have to look at our assets, and Ellsworth has wonderful assets. It's a fantastic environment. It's a wonderful quality of life. You've got a downtown, a Main Street, it's nearly a Norman Rockwell, New England town. You've got a place with some young people who want to make this work. It's terrific, and there's huge opportunity here. And then I would say the last thing, which really will come back to you and to your education department at the end of the day, is to be successful, as the strategy develops, you have to think about being comprehensive. So the education program, as an example, has to develop to support the economic development strategy. The road infrastructure has to develop to support the economic development strategy, and so forth. It will take time, but I really believe that Ellsworth has huge opportunity. As you know, the Business Development Corporation was created to promote the common good and general welfare of the people in and around Ellsworth, to promote economic development, foster economic growth, and facilitate job creation. We've worked on three projects, trying to bring natural gas to the city, which we've set aside, probably potentially possible in the long term, but something that will be a while in coming if it does. Two other projects, centrally important, the broadband project, which you know about, which you've supported this in, and which is now going to start accelerating with the building season as spring gets here, the incubator project. And we had a wonderful discussion tonight. There is so much potential as we think about putting together a center for growth technology companies and really creating a cluster of activity, a campus, a facility that they can work in, conference, common conference facilities, training for young entrepreneurs. I really think this has huge, long-term potential. And then we're working on other things, developing some educational programs to support the first two, thinking about how to create more professional housing. I certainly can tell you, I have many employees looking for opportunities to live in good, middle-class housing in Ellsworth. And I think it's an opportunity that has not been well captured yet. And then thinking, we spent a part of our meeting tonight just talking with Mickey about how to stimulate Main Street, things that we could do to kind of revitalize the opportunity there. We need your help. We're going to get into a position with the incubator project where we're going to have to guarantee leases. We're going to have operating expenses. And as you know, we, other than the in-kind, which you folks have been more than generous with, we don't have any resources to put toward that. And that's what really led to the resolution that Bob has, I should say, the chairman, has introduced tonight. And we really appreciate your support for it. I really congratulate you for setting up the corporation, allowing Michelle and Mickey to put so much of their time into it. They've been fantastic, and we all look forward to making this a success.
Great. Do you want to just stay for a second? And if there are any questions, we could take them down?
Sure.
Counsel, any questions? Questions, comments?
Well, if you say comments, I think it's right back at you. Thank you for being part of this.
Well, thank you.
Anyone else going to present at all, or is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. So counsel, what's your pleasure on this?
Mr. Chairman, would you like a motion or discussion first?
We'll put, have a motion, and then we'll go to discussion.
If you're ready, then...
Anytime, counsel.
I would make a motion resolved to approve the request of the EBDC Board for the City of Ellsworth to deed EBDC, the last two unsold parcels in Commerce Park, map 42, lot 8-1-10 and lot 8-1-4, plus the 11 acres on map 42, lot 8-1, at the end of Commerce Park. Further allow EBDC to sell the parcels at negotiable end-of-market value rates. The corporation's net earnings shall be devoted exclusively for the benefit of performing the functions of, carrying out the foregoing purposes, and no part of said net earnings shall become beneficial or advantage to any private shareholder or individual. Also, further move that the City of Ellsworth would like to retain 100-foot right-of-way to the right of the cul-de-sac for future possible growth in that area. And we would have to negotiate that as far as exactly where it goes. So I would include that in my motion.
Thank you, counsel. Second? Moving seconded, Councillor Beetham, I think. Anyone, as far as discussion goes, anybody want to add anything, or?
I'd just like to say that from what we've discussed from time to time and from what we've heard tonight, I think it's incredibly exciting what we're looking at in the next few years. There's a few things I just can't wait to see. Hope I live long enough.
Anyone else?
Does anyone on the board not understand my reason for that right-of-way? Do you want a further explanation? Okay, there's just too much acreage to landlock up there.
Moving seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion? That is unanimous.
To me, that's as good as winning the state wrestling title.
Mr. Chairman?
It's a great move. Yes, Mickey?
Can I just say one other?
You step out.
This, I mean, I have got to tell you, the partners that we, you all and myself and the staff, Tavon's Board, that's the key, and that has really made the difference. And I just needed to say that because I don't think Michelle, or Tammy, or I, or whoever could have done this without the partnership.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
Well said.
Thank you, Mickey.
Couldn't agree more. All right, counsel. Item number 15, Council Order 031506, Discussion and Action on Holding a Special Municipal School Budget Validation Referendum Election on June 9, 2015, for the purpose of City of Ellsworth Voters to Vote on the School Budget Validation Referendum Question.
Chairman, move to approve the request of the City Manager to approve holding a special municipal school budget validation referendum election on June 9, 2015, for the purpose municipal school budget validation referendum election, June 9, 2015, for the purpose of allowing the school budget.
Second.
Moved and second it, any further discussion? All those in favor? So June the 9th it will be? Motion carried unanimously. Item number 16.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? It's unanimous. We adjourn.